Kenny, everybody signing over there?
With the...
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the next meeting of the Chapter Two General Council. On March seventeenth, Independence Day, 2025. Madam Cook, would you please read the open document?
Yes, provisions of the Ocean Call of Media Act have been in compliance as notice was published in the Beacon and Bray Park Trust in the time eight days later this week.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Right.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Colangelo.
Here.
Mr. Deamore.
Here.
Mr. Dupre.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, please stand for the class.
Oui, just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have received it. All right, first up, we have a proclamation for National Library Week. I'm going to ask my library friends to conduct when we'll stand by that beautiful poster. Set in front of there. Oh, okay. I got you wrong. These are my friends from the Tuckerton Library. We are all members of the Tuckerton Library Association, which means we are in charge of making our library wonderful for all of you to come and use at any time. And we are doing a very special celebration this year. It is a hundred and fiftyth anniversary. That's better than the Ocean County Library. They are only a hundred and twenty-five.
Nope, they're a hundred.
Just a hundred. All right, so we're fifty years ahead of them. All right, so I'm going to read this National Library Week 2025. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning; whereas libraries serve as community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources; whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming; whereas libraries partner with schools, our school, businesses, and organizations; whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth; whereas libraries nurture young minds through story times, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives; whereas libraries protect the right to rethink and explore without censorship; whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all; whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under this theme, Drawn to the Library. Now therefore be resolved that I, Susan R. Marshall, proclaim April sixth to twelve, 2025, as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. And that is the proclamation. And I will give you a copy that's not written on and sign it. I know there's a copy that hangs up.
Yep.
So this is a librarian. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. I'm Elanokee, branch manager and librarian, just down the street.
Right. Hopefully you have seen her there. She's done an excellent job. And we have Karen Amon, who is president of the library trustees right now. And we have my friend here. Would you introduce yourself to?
Yes, I'm Lynn Haley. I'm one of the trustees.
Okay, so here we are. Can I just tell them about a few of the...
Absolutely, yes. We're going to give a plug here.
Okay. So I have lots of programming for children and adults. Next, Monday afternoon, March twenty-fourth, we're going to have a two o'clock advice from a professional genealogist if you would like to trace your roots. Two weeks from tonight, we're going to have Hidden History of Maritime New Jersey with adjunct professor and licensed diver Steve Natchowicz. And he has a program that's going to be at seven o'clock at the branch. And then Monday, April fourteenth, we're going to have William J. Lewis, Preserving the Pines, New Jersey, and the Origins of Environmentalism. That's at seven o'clock. And in April, at the end of twenty-first, we're going to have a rain barrels and their benefits demo, learn how to make a rain barrel. That one's at six thirty. These and many other programs are free. All you have to do is sign up or stop in. And if you don't have a library card, please come in and we'd be happy to get you one. Great. Can you leave those around for today?
Oh, you're about there.
So if you're interested in any of those programs, you can pick up a flyer on the way out, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Well, hello.
Want me to take that thing? And we're going to go on to legislation, Councilman Green. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening.
All right, so let's move on to finance. Councilman Warren.
I have the opposite of nothing this evening.
Yes.
I have three ordinances this evening plus three resolutions to go through. So I'm going to start with ordinance number two of two thousand twenty-five, which was introduced at our last council meeting. This is an ordinance authorizing and appropriating one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in bonds to open and replace sanitary sewer mings on Daddy Tucker Drive. So I have ordinance number two of two thousand twenty-five, an ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton and the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for sanitary sewer main replacement on Daddy Tucker Drive and appropriating one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the same. And at this time, I make a motion that we open this up to public comment.
Second.
Okay, so the motion and the second that we open up to public comment. Only questions on this ordinance. So does anyone have any questions? All in favor, sorry.
All right.
Okay, so does anyone in the public have any questions?
All right, seeing none, I make a motion that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public court. All in favor?
All right.
All right, you're good to go.
And I move that we adopt ordinance number two of two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance as read. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-five, and this is the first reading of the ordinance. We will have a second reading and open to public comment on April twenty-first, correct, Jen? On April twenty-first. So ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-five, calendar year two thousand twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap end pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight, colon, four dash forty-five point one four. And I move this ordinance on first reading. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance on first reading. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And again, second reading of this ordinance and public comment will be on April twenty-first. I also have ordinance number four, which is a bond ordinance. And this, again, is the first reading. Second reading will be April twenty-first. And we'll have our open to public comment at that time. So this is ordinance number four of two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton and the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of a vehicle for the police department and an ambulance in and for the borough and appropriating three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of three hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars in bonds or notes of the same, of the borough to finance the same. And I move this on first reading. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance number four as read. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes. With the exception of the ambulance, I have to abstain from that, but yes for all the other vehicles.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah.
And then again, second reading and public comment will be on April twenty-first for this ordinance as well. Next, I have a resolution for the introduction of the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget. And I'm going to go through some line items here of the budget. And we will be having, the budget hearing is also on April twenty-first, correct, Jen?
Yes.
So, and we'll be having a budget hearing on April twenty-first, which will be open to public comment, public questions as well at that time. The two thousand twenty-five municipal budget for the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-five revenue and appropriation summaries for two thousand twenty-five total miscellaneous revenues in the amount of one million three hundred forty-three thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents, receipts from delinquent taxes of one hundred ninety thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and one cent, total local tax for municipal purposes will be four million three hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Amount to be raised by taxes is that same exact number for a total general revenues of six million three hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Our summary of appropriations, operating expenses, salaries, and wages will be two million five hundred sixteen thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Other expenses, two million two hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred eight thousand dollars and thirty cents. Deferred charges and other appropriations in the amount of seven hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Capital improvements in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Debt service in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Reserve for uncollected taxes will be three hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for a total general appropriations of six million three hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. On the water sewer side, the two thousand twenty-five dedicated water sewer utility budget, miscellaneous revenues of three million one hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents with a total revenues of three million three hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Our summary of appropriations is operating expenses, salaries, and wages, six hundred forty-six thousand dollars. Other expenses, one million eight hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred eighty dollars. Capital improvements of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Debt service of six hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Deferred charges and other appropriations of fifty thousand seven hundred twenty-five thousand fifty dollars with total appropriations amounting three million three hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. I don't need to do anything else right from there?
No.
Okay, and then do I move the budget on first reading? Okay, then I make a motion to move the budget on first reading to second reading and open to public on April twenty-first. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a mouthful. All right. Sorry, give me a second because now I have to get to the bills list. Next, I have a resolution for payment of claims. For this month, our payments going out equal three hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents. A resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing payment of claims in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And I so move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on authorizing payment of claims. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
I'm standing.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then my final resolution this evening, Madam Mayor, is for the omission from tax sale for one of the properties in the borough. This property is going to make equal monthly payments on their tax head to it. So we're not going to discuss up for tax sale. Resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to admit from tax sale and allow equal monthly installments. And I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then that is all I have until committee retreats.
Okay. Trying to figure out a way to stop him. That's a lot of figures. I need you to figure it all out. All right, next is Public Works, Water and Sewer Council, person Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm reading two resolutions this evening, two have to do with road opening permits on King Fisher. And the second is to authorize the C D L drug testing agreement. Just a few announcements. Ocean County Department of Solid Waste Management has renewed two programs that are popular, and that is the household hazardous waste program and the residential document shredding program. The link to the county website to get all the details is on our, per our website. So you can go there and get all the information and how we register and so on. The Public Works yard, open on Sundays, will start April the sixth. And the Public Works yard will be closed on Friday, April the eighteenth, and that's per the employee's contract. I have a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing approval of a road opening permit on King Fisher Road for block one thirteen, lot thirty, and granting relief under section four nineteen dash fifteen of the Borough Code. This is to reconnect the gas at three thirty-four King Fisher Road, and I move this resolution. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
I have a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the approval of a road opening permit on King Fisher Road for block one twelve, lot five, and granting relief under section four nineteen fifteen of the Borough Code. This is to connect the gas also at four oh seven King Fisher Road, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah.
I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing an agreement with Dynamic Testing Service for commercial driver's license random drug and alcohol testing, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on, Government, Parks, and Brands, and Community Affairs, Councilman Deamore. I do have something that we do say.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a resolution. This resolution has to do with the sale of the grist mill. The auction was held right here on March twelfth, and the bid price was a hundred ninety thousand dollars, which was the minimum bid price. Therefore, resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of municipally owned properties sold at public auctions in accordance with NJ SA forty-eight, colon, twelve dash thirteen. I so move that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Next is Administration.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Next is Administration and Regulation, Councilman Deamore.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items this evening. The first one being the minutes from the previous meeting. And I know all the council members had a chance to see their minutes. Anybody have any additions or corrections that they would like to make at this time? There being none, I so move that we accept the minutes as read.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the second and final item that I have, Your Honor, is a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Thomas Olson as alternate electric subcode official and electric inspector for the Borough of Tuckerton. And the term will be expired December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. I so move this.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this appointment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
That's all?
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, next is Law and Public Safety, Councilman Peterson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the monthly activity report for the police department for February twenty twenty-five. Calls for service were two hundred and sixty-seven, arrests were twelve, motor vehicle stops were one hundred and twenty-nine, motor vehicle summons were one hundred and nine, motor vehicle accidents were eleven, medical was thirty-one, and suspicious person and vehicle checks were eighteen. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you very much. Another busy month, right? Okay. Yes, my turn again. And I have an appointment. First of all, we're appointing a new municipal judge. So this is a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing our, our novel, is it magi...
Magistry.
Magistry Esquire as our municipal court judge.
I move that. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I have, I have some appointments, but before I do that, I also have some resignations. So I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Ligius Sansalone from Historic Preservation, Judy Olivera from Historic Preservation, and Neil Saunders from Historic Preservation.
I move that. Second.
Okay, I now have a motion and a second to accept these resignations. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes, Mr. Breland. Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes, Mr. Breland.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and now I have two appointments to make. This is a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing a member to the Tuckerton Historic Preservation Committee. And there are two. One is Don Rocheski to have an on-expire term. And that will, his, he's going to fill an on-expire term. And his appointment will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And then I would like to appoint Jesse Belante as a member for an on-expire term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I move that. Second.
All right, and this is for the Historic Preservation Committee. So we lost people, but we're getting other people. So I have a motion and a second to accept these appointments. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And now I have an appointment for, I have too many pages here tonight. I have an appointment to the Economic Development Committee. So this is a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing a member to the Tuckerton Borough Economic Development Committee, and that is Kim Sakovic. She is appointed as a member for an on-expire term, and this will expire December thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-five.
I move that resolution. Second.
Right, and now I have a motion and a second to go forward with this resolution. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupre.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now, let's see. I have one more thing. I was reading, I don't know anyone, whether anyone has seen Tom Whitaker. He has, he's a painter, a local painter, and he has an office on One Lightbridge Lane. And once a month, he publishes a very interesting newsletter, which I will leave out for people to look at, have to look at tonight. I wanted to read a little piece of one of these portions here. It's Positively, Positivity Prevails. Springtime symbolizes new renewal, growth, and positivity. As nature awakens from its winter slumber, we can embrace the season's energy and find inspiration in its beauty. Springtime is a powerful reminder that positivity, positivity, I'm sorry, can flourish, just like the flowers that bloom. By embracing the spirit of the season, we can cultivate joy, hope, and a renewed sense of purpose in our lives. So let's have positivity prevail this spring. Think about that. Now I'm going to turn it over to our board's listener.
I have nothing this evening, Madam.
Okay, thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Hope you found this interesting. Madam Cook, your turn.
I have quite a few things this evening. The first thing I have is I need to please read this letter of resignation. Please accept this as my formal resignation from position as laborer at Tuckerton Borough effective March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. This decision is not made lightly, as I have truly valued my time here. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunities I've had to grow professionally, the support and experiences I've gained during my time at Tuckerton Borough have been invaluable, and I will always appreciate them. And it goes on to say, "Thank you again for your guidance, support, and the wonderful experience I've had as a borough. I hope to stay in touch and wish the team continue..."
Um, I hope to stay in touch and wish the team continued success. Sincerely, Giovanni Completely Arrow." So I need a.
I move to accept that.
Second. With regret.
Okay, I have a motion to accept with regrets and a couple of seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Diemore?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, with regrets.
Thank you.
The next one I have is also a, another letter of resignation, resignation. Dear Chief Olson, please accept this letter of resignation as my formal notification. I'm leaving the position of patrolman effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm grateful for the last four years being employed by this agency and getting the opportunity to work with my fellow officer. It's been an honor and privilege to serve the residents of Tuckerton. I'm thankful for the opportunity it provided me, sincerely, Stephen Adams.
Move to accept the resignation. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept this resignation also. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, yes, with regrets.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Diemore?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, with regrets.
Uh, next thing I have is a raffle application for the Hackham Tribe Redmond Lodge, number sixty-one. It's for the annual raffle, uh, renewal.
I made that motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this, uh, this application. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Abstain.
Mr. Diemore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Abstain.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The last thing I have is a resolution for executive session. Um, this is a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey providing for an executive session in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act to discuss pending slash anticipated litigation.
Remember that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, right? One of your.
Yeah, on second.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And, um, that is all I have this evening.
That's it. Okay, well, we all have a lot tonight. Um, let's see, Mr. Martin, I ask you if you have any reports to make?
Uh, I do. So for, uh, for Pride and Celebration Committee, um, on April fifth of this year, it'll be, uh, Easter recon, it's going to be held at the Tuckerton United Methodist Church, but, um, all are welcome within the borough, and Pride and Celebration Committee is going to be, uh, assisting them with Easter eggs this year, so, whatever, I'm saying. But that'll be on, um, April fifth, and I will get that up also on the borough website. I believe it's ten AM. What's the word? Okay, I believe it's at ten AM, but I, I will make sure and I will have it up on the borough website, but it is April fifth.
Okay, the, uh, the Methodist Church is working with the borough to put this out. We had a nice pretty yard there with nice grass and everything, so, um, and had it last year, and we're gonna do it again this year, so that's good.
Two years ago, the church did it.
Oh, two years ago? We didn't do it this year. Yeah, okay. Anything else?
That is it.
That's it?
Are you gonna do also April fifth? Okay.
I'll get down.
That's it for me, and Mr. Dupree will take it from here.
And, uh, chairman of the environmental committee, Peter Nolan, couldn't make it tonight due to the previous engagement, but, uh, in her behalf, I'm asking everybody to come out for a Tuckerton Borough Community Cleanup on Saturday, April fifth at nine